Thank you for your patience and welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, August 19th. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. Thank you. At this time, I will ask our city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council due to just cause or emergency circumstance.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we've received one request, and that is from Councilmember Hedges.
Councilmember Hedges would... Please address.
Yes, I want to thank you very much. I am requesting to participate remotely under the just cause circumstances as I will be assisting an immediate family member for a medical reason. I confirm that I have both audio and video on throughout the entire meeting. There will be no individuals over the age of 18 present in the room with me.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion to accept Councilmember Hedges' request to participate remotely?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Hedges, and we're glad you're with us tonight. We are excited to...
With pleasure.
Good. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip, which I believe many of you have already, and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will be open until I close public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with a closed session item. Item number one, conference with labor negotiators. Now, before we convene the closed session, City Clerk, do we have any slips to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we've received a total of 30 requests to speak on this item. So per our adopted council rules and procedures, that would indicate one minute per speaker.
All right. Thank you very much.
So moving forward, we will invite up the next three speakers. If you hear a name called, please line up to my right so that we can get all of your comments expeditiously. Our first three speakers will be Jose Mora Cortez, followed by Ruben Hernandez and Roberto Prado V.
Hello, my name is Jesse Dolan, and we have tried to be reasonable in this negotiation, and it is not going the way we feel that it should. And for that reason, I am strike ready.
My name is Leon Bowles, and I am also strike ready.
And as I'm also strike ready.
I'm Elmer Castro, and I'm also strike ready.
Raoul Perez, I'm also strike ready.
My name is Zane, I'm strike ready.
My name is Christopher Tovar, and I am strike ready.
My name is Jonathan Layala, I'm strike ready.
My name is Jose Motta, and I'm strike ready.
My name is Ruben Hernandez, and I am strike ready.
My name's Luis Elo, and I also am strike ready.
My name is Jordan Miley, strike ready.
My name's Rafael Hernandez, I'm strike ready.
My name is Gustavo Cornellia, I'm strike ready.
Roberto Prado Blaskis, strike ready.
Kyle Mensich, I am strike ready.
David Patton, I am strike ready.
Rico Barajas, I'm strike ready.
Is Gerardo Jimenez, I'm strike ready.
Manuel Garcia, I'm strike ready.
I'm Juan Cepeda, I'm strike ready.
Luis Barajas, I'm strike ready.
I'm Michael Hall, and I'm strike ready.
Maria Rodriguez, I'm strike ready.
Andres Hernandez, I'm strike ready.
I'm Nick Calderon, I'm strike ready.
My name is Juan Barajas, and I'm strike ready.
Alfredo Ramirez, I'm strike ready.
Is Ray Ramos, strike ready.
Greg Robinson, I'm strike ready.
Strike, 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 I'm strike ready.
It is what it is, as long as it takes.
You know what, I'm strike ready.
Mark Cooper, Chapter Chairman for 521. This is only a small portion of our members that have signed a strike-ready petition. And as you see from the people here, we have not seen a very meaningful movement at the table. We are hoping that this sends a message that we would like to see some movement. And I am strike ready. Thank you.
Eric Morphy, Public Works. First responder, second responder, third responder, we're out in storms. We're out in the parks in storms, we're out in the streets in storms. We are out at the plant manning all of those valves and pieces of equipment that go haywire in the middle of a storm. Even not in the middle of a storm, we've been called out in the middle of the night to help the plant. We've been called out for emergencies. We got called out for the collapse on El Camino of the framework around the building, down around Second and Third, and El Camino, a tree, bay tree, covered six lanes of El Camino. We were out for that. We are out for everything. Again, my name is Eric Morphy, and I am strike ready.
Thank you. Thank you. There'll be no cheering, no cheering. Thank you. And we have one additional request to speak. That is Tom Lees.
I'm ready to walk the picket line with our friends from the... Our union friends. And it seems like we have a lot of money for overturning ballot measures, but we don't have enough money to properly pay our employees. I think I've been volunteering at the San Mateo Senior Center for over six years, and I've seen time and time again institutional knowledge, incredible people leaving because San Mateo wouldn't give them a small raise. And it's kind of known around town and around the community that San Mateo is a training center for people to go to different places to work. And this is our best resource we have, standing out there, doing the job every day. And when you work in a place for a long time, you know all the nooks and crannies, you have relationships with your employees. It's the best investment we have in our community, is high-quality, long-term employees. So I hope you guys can find them extra money to pay these people what they're worth. It's very expensive to live here, as you know. And a lot of these guys probably have to drive from far away, so I hope you come to the table and bargain.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, and thanks to everybody who spoke in public comment. We will now convene to Conference Room C.
Hey, Rich. For the closed session, you're going to move over to Teams. We can't hear you. All right, so we're not able to hear you. You may want to just leave the Zoom meeting, and then we'll bring you back in.
Hey there, Rich.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm gonna mute me. Now, can you hear me on Zoom?
Yes, we can.
So I can, I can cut this phone off then?
No, I think we need the phone.
Okay.
Looks like you're speaking. All right, let's see.
I think I'm hearing you through this.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you can hang up on the phone.
Okey-dokey. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Boy.
Hooray.
Sometimes it works. I'm gonna turn my audio off until we get started.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Martin will have to read that script again.
Councilmember Hedges, you will not have to repeat that script until the beginning of the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to go? All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Manira. We are here to continue the study session, and we're going to receive a presentation on housing element programs for minimum residential densities in mixed-use development and family housing requirements. And Manira Sandhir, our planning manager, is going to lead the discussion. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, honorable council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Manira Sandhir. I'm the planning manager with the Community Development Department. And the purpose of tonight's study session is to seek council direction on setting minimum residential densities in mixed-use projects citywide and near transit, and creating requirements to increase the production of family housing. I do want to take a minute here to introduce our consultants, Darren Smith from Economics and Planning Systems, also known as EPS, and Nick Hamilton from Good City Company, who are joining us remotely via Zoom. And we'll be raising their hands as we get further along in the discussion if they have comments to provide during the conversation piece. Okay, so to provide an overview of my presentation for tonight, I'll be starting off with some key housing element and general plan policies that were the impetus for tonight's item, and then also providing some background analysis, some trends, some data that will tee up the questions for council discussion and direction, and close out with anticipated next steps. So starting with our housing element, the council earlier this year adopted the six-cycle housing element that runs from 2023 to 2031 after significant community outreach and input. And the housing element includes two policies that specifically focus on encouraging the production of family housing and establishing minimum densities for mixed-use projects. The first of these, Policy H 1.5, is to address an established need in the city that was based on community and council input and analysis in the housing element to prevent issues like overcrowding, to provide more stability in housing, address housing needs for special needs groups, including single female heads of households, as well as Hispanic families. And so the policy lays out some methods on how this can be achieved and calls for increased production of larger units in market rate as well as subsidized projects. In case of subsidized projects, the city does have more leverage because we can leverage city funds to require more three-bedroom units in projects like the Kikuk Crossing project or the bespoke development. Policy H 1.9 is one of the goals to encourage higher proportion of residential uses in mixed-use projects and calls for minimum residential requirements with the residential component either with a residential component either citywide or in certain zones such as near transit. And the program also calls for projects on the site inventory to have a minimum 50% residential component. But that's not a hard requirement. That's something that's not mandated by state law, but that was something that staff considered and included in the policy that could be evaluated further. In addition to the housing element, this was an exciting year for us. The city council also adopted the 2040 general plan and which also has policies to optimize development opportunities in major commercial and transit-oriented development areas. And these are areas within our downtown, around the Caltrain station, along El Camino Real, in order to maximize the density specified in the land use plan and make for more efficient use of land and infrastructure. Policy LU1.4, which encourages mixed uses to include residential components, is also consistent with the Policy H1.9 of our housing element. And enabling this policy would allow for greater proximity between jobs and housing, would activate more pedestrian-friendly environments, and reduce traffic congestion and vehicle miles traveled. And then finally, Policy LU2.2 focuses on projects being required to meet a minimum density standard when near transit. So based on all of these policies, staff conducted some additional analysis, and that's what we are presenting tonight. So with these policies as guiding principles, we can start with a discussion around the minimum densities in mixed-use development. And I wanted to start with setting the table on some definitions and clarifications about mixed use. When I say mixed use, I think all of us perhaps have a different vision or understanding of what mixed use is, and it can be used in different contexts. So I just wanted to share that before we go into the analysis. So there are mixed-use zones, which are areas where a mix of uses may be allowed. There are mixed-use projects, for example, of one development that has a mix of uses. You can have vertical mixed use, where it's one building, and you can have retail on the ground floor, offices on the next three, and residential above. Or you can have horizontal mixed-use projects, which can be mixed use along an entire site with different buildings having different types of uses. So within our general plan 2040 land use map, which can be seen on the screen, and you can see the blue areas, those are the designated mixed-use land use designations. And they allow for a range of commercial, retail, office, residential, institutional uses within the same site or building. However, not all projects in these mixed-use zones are required to include a residential use. And that was a council direction that was provided during the general plan update. There can be projects that are solely office projects. There can be projects that are non-residential mixed-use projects, such as, you know, a mix of office and institutional uses or office and retail uses. However, the focus for tonight's study session is mixed-use projects with a residential component. And the focus is on whether on a project-by-project basis, should we be looking at a minimum residential density or residential square footage when compared with the overall development? So to inform this analysis, we also looked at state laws, which are currently in effect. As we know, there are a number of state housing laws, such as state density bonus. There's the Housing Affordability Act, and all of them are layered. So we wanted to understand how they apply to mixed uses. State density bonus law specifically allows mixed-use projects with at least five units to provide concessions and incentives for the project as proposed. So that can include concessions and incentives and waivers for the commercial part of that project as well. There is a certain subsection of the state density bonus law, which was established under AB 1551, that is more prescriptive. It says that if you're a mixed-use project and you partner with an affordable housing developer, you can provide variations or exceed the height standards or the floor area standards or require lesser parking, but it provides an objective standard around it. It says you can vary up to 20% from those requirements. And therefore, it's rarely used, perhaps, because it is that prescriptive. And we've seen commercial projects wanting more than what is allowed under this part of the state law. However, the state density bonus law does not prescribe or indicate what a minimum standard is for residential components of a mixed-use project. And that's where the challenge for us lies. So taking a look at some of the recent mixed-use projects, we wanted to understand how this plays out in the real world and evaluate the trends that we have observed. So we looked at projects between 2020 to October of 2023 and found that with the exception of two projects on our list, the first two rows, a lot of the projects do include a high residential component. We've only had one standalone office project recently, which was the First NB project at the Donut Delight site in downtown, across from the Caltrain station. All the other projects have included some residential component. However, the first two projects are considered outliers, and that's where we felt that it's important to flag this issue where a commercial or a mixed-use development could produce a very small amount of residential but benefit from the concessions and waivers that can be granted under state density bonus law. I must also note that with the exception of the Fish Market project, all the other projects are located within a half mile of transit stations or along the El Camino Real corridor. So with that, some of the key takeaways, you know, we've seen a growing trend of mixed-use projects with a housing component. I think that trend will continue with the adopted general plan 2040. I know as part of that adoption, the city council limited the height of standalone office projects. So that will probably incentivize further mixed-use development projects in the city. You know, we highlighted the two outliers, where there are projects that have provided a very small residential component but benefited from state density bonus laws. And then while mixed use allows greater flexibility in development, the city currently does not have a required residential component or a percentage that has to be residential. So we also had EPS analyze some of the financial feasibility of requiring that there be a minimum amount of residential in mixed-use projects that have a residential component. And what EPS found was that establishing a minimum residential density or square footage, setting higher minimum residential densities around transit areas, or perhaps even exploring a tiered approach for concessions or incentives based on the amount of residential provided, would not make market rate projects infeasible. So we have seen these trends where we have, you know, projects that are proposing a lot of residential as part of mixed-use projects, and therefore, they are confident that that would not be an impediment should the city explore this requirement. So with that, staff will be seeking direction from council on three questions: whether the city should establish minimum residential requirements, whether there should be a specific density requirement within a certain radius of Caltrain stations or along the El Camino Real corridor, and whether commercial incentives should be tiered depending on the proportion of residential units provided. Moving on to part two of our study session tonight, which is a related topic, although yet completely different, which is tied to inclusionary family housing or requiring family housing as part of projects. Family housing could be described as three bedrooms or more types of units that allow for larger households to meet their housing needs. So staff did some analysis in terms of unit size trends, and we looked at apartments that were built in San Mateo between 2018 and 2023 and found that private developers of market-rate housing disproportionately produce fewer three-bedroom units. And, you know, looking at this number, only 8% of the total units that were built in that time period were three-bedroom units or more. However, when the city partners and subsidizes affordable housing development, they do generally include more family-sized units. And we have an example in the next slide, which is all of our pipeline projects that are either approved or under review between 2020 and 2023. And you can see the bottom two highlighted in yellow. Those are projects that the city partnered with or is actively engaging with. And those two projects do have a much higher percentage of three-bedroom units. I do want to point out that out of the total units, 1792, that are in the pipeline, only 85 units, which is 4%, are three bedrooms. And if you take out the two projects that are subsidized by the city, we only have four market-rate three-bedroom units proposed in this housing stock or pipeline that might be coming up. And only one of those would be affordable. So these numbers really highlight sort of that need that we've all known exists that was, you know, like analyzed in depth in the housing element. But this just shows that disparity, that we're not promoting the type of housing that the city seems to desire and the community seems to want. We also received some lease data this morning. Thank you, Rachel, for sharing that. And I wanted to highlight that as well, because we all understand that the need is not just in three-bedroom units. It's all across the board. We saw high demand for all of the housing types in Kikuk Crossing with 6,000 applications received for the 130 non-voucher units that were available. The lowest number of applications were for the studio units. I think the two-bedroom was the highest, but there was also really high demand for the three-bedroom units, which was at 1,200-plus applications. So this also just demonstrates the fact around the need for more family housing. Oh, I wanted to highlight one other aspect here, that studios anecdotally are the least preferred when it comes to affordable housing, because people are generally looking to move up to the one-bedroom. Okay, so, you know, we know there's this need. The city council has identified this as a priority in recent years. We did look at our existing policies, and while, you know, the city has some alternative inclusionary measure that developers could rely on that is more bedroom-based to provide more three-bedroom units, the state law, the way the state density bonus law is written, it's tied to units. So it rarely happens that we can, you know, use those policies that we have in place. We also had EPS look at the financial analysis and see whether it would be feasible to require family housing as part of these market-rate projects. And what EPS found was that the city could require that one out of every five affordable unit be a three-bedroom unit, and that would be a viable financially feasible option for developers. So that would mean out of the 16% inclusionary that we already, or sorry, 15% inclusionary that we already required, 20% could be three-bedroom units. So we're teeing up two questions for council. One is tied to the EPS analysis and whether the city should require all developments with affordable units provide a minimum of 20% of these units as three-bedroom units. But based on the numbers that we found, we wanted to tee up a second question, which is should the city also evaluate the feasibility of requiring all units to have a percentage be three-bedroom units based on the needs that are demonstrated? We haven't done a financial analysis for what that number could look like, but that is something that we could explore should the council give us that direction. In terms of next steps, based on council direction tonight, we can go back and conduct additional analysis. We do plan to conduct some robust stakeholder and outreach and engagement once we have this direction and have completed the analysis. We did not specifically do outreach on the study session, but these, you know, policies and programs in the general plan and housing element were well communicated, and we have been having offline conversations with affordable housing partners to understand the trends that are happening in the development world. I think our outreach in the next phase would really go out and look closely at their input and draft code and policy updates that can then come back to the Planning Commission and City Council through public hearings for adoption. So this concludes staff's presentation, and I am joined by our consulting team in Rachel and Zach to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Zach and Rachel, for all your work and our consultant partners as well. Who would like, I guess, is there a public comment that we have?
Madam Mayor, as of right now, I have received one request to speak on this item. If you're in council chambers or participating via Zoom, I will need a request-to-speak slip if you would like to speak on this item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand now. We'll give you just a few moments to do so. Madam Mayor, that's a total of three requests to speak, so per council rules of procedures. We will have a total of three minutes per speaker.
Great. Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
So our first speaker will be Mitch Spiegel, followed by Michael Reagan.
First, thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak today and obviously for all the work that you've done on it. I really just want to talk a little bit about directing staff to include the housing community, including for sale and affordable developers. I know there's a big kind of leaning towards the affordable side, but it's going to really take all of us to tackle the housing crisis. The second piece is that I think it's an important understanding that with mixed use, flexibility is a key strength of mixed-use development, and that by making minimums and having restrictions, that it actually creates that disparity in flexibility. So I think while we look at restrictions, we need to understand that we're weighing that versus the strength of the zoning itself. And then the third, I think it's important that we prioritize housing, and I love that we're encouraging family units. I think you're spot on with needing to get more three bedrooms. I would ask that city council urges staff to, when they consider minimums, to look through it from the lens of incentives and what would move the needle on an incentive basis versus restrictions. Again, I think that that creates a more holistic building environment for San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Reagan, and the final speaker on this item will be in our virtual environment. That is Asil Haruna Beva.
Good evening. Hope everyone's having a great summer. Almost over. This topic is kind of important to us because we're dealing with a project at Hillsdale that kind of throws this imbalance off and is probably an important kind of reference. Mr. Bohannon, who owns the Hillsdale Mall, came to us and said that he, with his development, that the majority of what he's building, 1.5 million square feet of office space, is his main objective, along with half a million square feet of residential. And it seems like that's where the imbalance is, and I'm hoping that we're trying to get more housing in. So I think this is an important topic that you guys are discussing, and I think some of the other things that I have been dealing with as far as this goes is I find that most of these apartments, maybe you guys could, you guys have all the information, that the housing that seems to be built or that you're talking about this evening is more in regards to rental units. I'm more in favor of building units that are for sale that people can actually become part of the community, not just temporarily part of the community and then move elsewhere. I think that's an important component to establishing more, kind of a better city where people feel part of the city. And there should be some incentives to allow people to move into the city on a long-term basis. And the three-bedroom makes sense because it does provide for people to have with, can have families and expand families and have children. The other problem with the affordability aspect of it is that sometimes when you do get the three-bedroom units, you will have multiple families moving in, and that is okay. It's fine. But then again, you start having the issues with parking. And I know that especially that's been a really problem with me is that parking doesn't seem to be a priority, but yet it will encumber into the neighborhoods. So I think if you're going to increase three bedrooms, you're definitely going to have to increase parking in these units or in these developments. And but I think this is an important topic, and I hope that we can have more housing development and less office space considering how many empty, how much percentage of office we do have now that's, you know, that's empty. So.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And our final speaker will be Asil Haruna Beva. And our final speaker will be Asil. Asil, please unmute your mic.
Sorry, it's actually Thomas Morgan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. One thing I've noticed in the kind of more expensive apartments is they have a lot of club rooms and gyms and I'd like to see in these mixed use buildings that those uses be eliminated because we're always hearing that the affordable units are too expensive. But then, you know, most of the weak people are out at work and those spaces are largely unused. So if you're telling me they cost, the affordable units cost so much, but these club rooms and gyms cost millions of dollars. And if you eliminate that cost, then I think the affordable units work. I also echo the support for the larger units for families and just kind of a functional comment is for retail, I think it's, you know, if you can have maybe office a floor or two above the retail, because just thinking from a quality of life standpoint is probably not very enjoyable to live above a retail establishment that wants to stay open later. And you're also kind of constraining the retail space from various uses and you'll kind of limit them to the hours of operation and developers also, I mean, operators want, you know, very high rents, which means they need to operate as much as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. And thank you, everyone who made comment on this important topic. Let's bring it back to council for questions and comments. Who would like to speak first? Okay, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you to the mayor and thank you, Manera, for your presentation. I appreciate the comprehensive presentation with a lot of details. I think I will, I still need to ask for a little bit of clarification on some of the differentiations being made. You noted, for example, that this this implementation action within one of these housing element policies, 19, about allowing 100% residential use in properties mixed use and requiring residential occupy 50% of that on our sites inventory is not necessarily a state law, not necessarily prescriptive to that number. So can you maybe help me understand? Sorry, let me try to understand how I've seen. I think you also noted that there are, that, you know, really we're just talking about mixed use developments with a residential use and that we're not requiring all mixed use properties and developments within the spaces to have residential components necessarily. But can you help me reconcile that a bit? Like, are we saying, for example, that we are not currently requiring residential uses of any of the mixed use designations that we have, like in the rail corridor and in our study areas, including properties in the housing element in the sites inventory?
Yes, happy to start through the mayor, if I may. So that is correct, Councilmember Lorraine. So the mixed use zones or the land use designations that were established as part of the general plan, they allow for a mix of uses. However, what actually is proposed there would really be up to the private developer and it would be evaluated against the standards that are in the zoning code and the policies in the general plan. However, my understanding based on, you know, the adoption process of the general plan 2040 is that the city is not requiring that those mixed uses must include a residential component.
Yeah, kind of just I'm building off of what Manera was saying. The goal is, is to open up for a range of use opportunities, but at the end of the day, outside of our residential land use designations, which do stipulate residential, that's where residential would occur for mixed use, which encompasses a range. You could have commercial, you could have office. It's allowing it as a use and we're actually going to be opening up as part of some of our housing element programs, allowing residential uses as a permitted use in virtually every district in the city minus, say like our service commercial, a couple of key districts where residential wouldn't be appropriate. But that would be a different step if we were actually going to say a property had to have a residential component that was in a non residential designation. So that's kind of worth saying is we're looking at different ways or if a project wants to utilize concessions and waivers through state density bonus law, then we would want to make sure there was a sufficient amount of residential with it, but not saying you have to have a residential component, if that answers your question.
Yes, I believe it does. Thank you for that. And another distinction, I think, I wanted to see if I could get clarity on is with the two different kinds of state density bonus law that I think you noted in one of your slides, one of which you mentioned came through an assembly bill and seems more prescriptive. And indeed, most developments to date have not invoked this in our city. And then we have, you know, sort of the more general, maybe more primary one that has been used. But can you maybe give me a sense of, I got the sense from the admin report and what we talked about with regard to what EPS was looking at, for example, that we used, you know, a tiered strategy of considering a certain amount of commercial increase in bonus up to 20%, which would have me think like, okay, that's, you know, heaving more towards what seemed to be like the prescription of the one that we haven't been using. So can you maybe remind me with the primary one, is it similar or is it more up to like council and planning commission discretion, staff discretion to determine that upper amount? Are we saying that 20 is kind of what we might be aiming for, whether it's prescribed or not?
Yeah, I can start and I'm hoping Darren might chime in as well on the EPS analysis. But the broader state density bonus law is not prescriptive. It only says that the project as proposed may avail itself of a certain number of concessions for, you know, the commercial part of the project as well. So we've had applicants who propose mixed use projects that include very small residential components, but can get, I'm not sure how much the percentage was, but definitely higher than 20% in terms of floor area standards. So that's been the challenge and the discrepancy between the two. And Darren, I don't know if you can add something to that?
Sure, thank you. Yes, again, I'm Darren Smith with Economic and Planning Systems. And the question, as I understand it, is about sort of the two different laws. One of them is essentially focused on housing development and says, if you build this many units at this income level, you can get this many, this much additional density. That's the primary purpose of it. And then, and so it's focused on residential development. It also allows those developments to seek waivers and concessions if it makes the project more feasible or reduces costs. And so that's really a housing focused one, although in some cases you can cite requests. For example, if there's a requirement that the ground floor has to be, a certain proportion of the ground floor has to be provided as retail or commercial use, you may seek a concession or a waiver of that if you can show or suggest that that waiver would make the project more feasible. And so that is something, for example, that affordable housing developers sometimes do is they say, okay, the zoning says we need to have ground floor retail here, but our funding sources can't support, can't provide funding for that ground floor retail by law. And so it's not a feasible thing for 100% affordable housing project to provide. The other law, the complimentary one, which was added just a few years ago, says that if you have a mixed use project, you can request up to 20% additional density on your, the commercial side of your project, if you're meeting certain standards for the residential side of your project. And again, this is where we have said, okay, we would love for there to be some standard that says that you're not doing the bare minimum residential, but rather have us some kind of substantive residential component of the project in order to qualify for up to that full 20% additional density on the commercial side. So in the presentation earlier, there were a number of examples of projects that have been mixed use projects and they ranged anywhere from the bare minimum residential, five units of residential per state law. But 90 some percent of that project was commercial. And so the question there is, should a project that is 90 some percent commercial do the bare minimum on residential and get the full benefit of the law's standards for what is essentially a commercial project? Many of the other projects on that list were more substantially residential and that seems to have been the intent of the law. But unfortunately, the law is very unclear about what those standards are, what minimum residential component a project should have in order to get the commercial bonus. And so we have worked with, spoken with the Housing and Community Development Department of the state to explore this issue. They had no real advice for us because it just hasn't come up for them. And so they have suggested that collectively, the city of San Mateo give this some thought and, and put together some ideas and essentially run it by HCD after those ideas have been formulated. So that's a very long, but hopefully complete answer to your question. If it's not, please follow up.
Thank you. I do, I do feel that was helpful. I appreciate that. I had at least one more question about thinking through. I guess when you bring up, Manera, the reminder that we're focusing tonight on mixed use projects that have a residential component, I start to wonder about how we can try to seek a goal of a certain amount of housing out of our mixed use land designations when we cannot necessarily control whether a development will have a housing, a residential portion. And so I guess like to that end, when we are talking about policies we could pursue, are we open is, you know, to branching beyond this discussion into something a little more holistic, somewhat like the Redwood City example, I feel you used in the admin report that, you know, takes a look at a whole area and considers like about how much housing we might want to see in that area, about how much office and allows developers, you know, flexibility to pursue portions of that?
I think we have to evaluate policy options at the direction of council. So I think if council wants to go that direction, we'd be open to looking at it and providing, coming back with recommendations. I did want to add a little bit of distinction on the mixed use projects. Councilmember Lorraine, so you mentioned that this is looking at mixed use projects like across the board versus like just in specific areas. And that is certainly the intent. I know we have the policy in H1.9 that spoke about the 50%. That was focused more just on the sites inventory. But there are a couple of options to explore here. One could be looking at mixed use projects based on square footages. So looking at, you know, what is the residential component of the project across the square footage of the entire project? The other could be looking at minimum density. So there could be areas of the city where the council could consider that perhaps any mixed use projects should provide a minimum of 50 dwelling units per acre, for example. So that could be another approach or another way to look at this if the council wants to establish a standard.
Sorry, just one other point I wanted to kind of highlight because you had mentioned like the Redwood City plan. And I think there's an important distinction between kind of what we're looking at with a city, which is a citywide policy versus a specific plan area, like the Redwood Cities Downtown Plan or like our Bay Meadows Plan. And when you have a specific plan area, you can assign specific numbers and say, we want to get a million square feet of office and at least 1,500 units of housing or, and then work to make sure that the sites within that area can achieve that. That kind of specificity, when you're looking at housing, like setting a cap on how much office you build or saying you want a certain amount of housing, it's a little bit more challenging to do on a citywide plan like a general plan. So just giving some context where I think a lot of examples have been specific plans where you have a bit more control because you have a more defined area and you can study a specific mix that goes into that area. But it's different when it's a citywide plan.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor, I will try to be, maybe go through my, any comments I might have so that I can pass it on to my colleagues. I think I appreciate Mitch's comment earlier from the public on the key being flexibility and what we pursue. I think particularly if we don't have a set target prescribed to us by the state, then I think what's important is that firstly, we reach out to our stakeholders who are, you know, working with our for profit housing developers, our nonprofit housing developers, those who would be subject to these, these policies and get some more input from them on what, what seems feasible and doable to them before we agree as a council on any particular number or percentage tonight. I, as was mentioned, I think that, of course, the main goal is to ensure that we're increasing access to housing and affordable housing in our city. And, and, you know, really also at a ratio, as Michael mentioned in his comment, that is not as focused on, you know, jobs, several times more jobs than, than housing units, for example, that we're looking for more of a balance and a healthier balance with, with what we have. But we, you know, we don't want to get too focused on prescribing too much of a percentage or something, for example, of residential if it doesn't seem feasible, because then maybe developers won't decide to develop in our, in our city and we won't accomplish our objective. So I think in general, to go to the questions presented by staff for council, you know, should the city establish minimum residential requirements for mixed use development with a residential component? I would say yes, probably. I think initially that's, that's where I'm trending in the direction, but I, again, I would hesitate to set an exact amount at this time and hope that we can do some more research, more outreach and maybe come back with some ideas and options that have been more robustly discussed and vetted. Number two, should the city establish specific minimum residential densities within a certain radius of Caltrain stations or along the El Camino corridor? I also agree that this makes sense to me, especially without, you know, I think given how much of what's in our study areas are in here, but also the idea that we want, you know, those study areas are within access to rich transit areas. I could see having a higher level of residential ask of density intensity be requested within those areas than outside there. And should commercial incentives be tiered? I'm open to exploring it. I think it makes sense to me, but I think it's another thing we will want to get more feedback on to understand like where the levels would, would make sense. And then on the family housing questions, I, you know, I'm similarly open. I'm basically, yes, but I'd like to revisit with more data before committing to anything on all of the questions. I particularly think, it seems as though we've made something of a case for making something like a 20% of below market rate units be three bedroom units, based on the economic feasibility that we've, we've looked into with EPS. But we, I didn't, I'm under the impression that we haven't necessarily done that for broader, so I'm open to exploring it. And I guess just some other quick thoughts on, I would say I'm open to other metrics. As I noted with, with the question about Redwood City, considering, you know, certain targets, I just think whatever we align on, I think we need to get a sense of what is our overall goal and, and making sure that what we're putting in place allows us to consider achieving that goal. And I, I would say let's consider alternatives for smaller properties. And I, I, I would say let's consider alternatives for smaller properties, um, and other properties that may not make sense for, uh, these, these policies. One size probably doesn't fit all, um, for any mixed use, even within the study areas, even within the rail corridor that have a residential component. Perhaps there can be some sort of in Luffy option for those that don't quite, uh, fit. And, uh, council may have discretion to determine, yes, that doesn't seem, uh, to be, uh, some, something that needs the, a certain amount of residential per this policy, but we can come up with something else to ensure that we're still furthering our goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to go next? Thank you, council member.
Well said. Um, Councilmember Lorraine covered many of my points. Um, and I guess I, I will just reiterate, I think that, um, I am also interested and open to exploring other metrics, um, including looking at the Redwood City and the Mountain View options, um, that peg, uh, the square footage, um, of commercial to housing units. And so I, you know, I think that that's an, you know, an interesting idea that deserves some, um, a look. And, um, and globally, I, I would just concur with, um, Councilmember Lorraine's points and some comments from the public about wanting, wanting to provide as much flexibility as possible and, and potentially looking more in the realm of like concessions. Having sort of a, a, a bare, a minimum density, um, that could, that could be opted out of within Lufy's potentially. And then also concessions for different tiers of increased density. And, and so I, I, I think that, you know, for me, it feels a little bit premature to, um, commit to a number without, um, or a specific, um, you know, methodology without the input from the, um, affordable and market rate developers. And, and being really, you know, wanting to be really cognizant and cautious of, um, of creating a policy with the best of intentions that could have cascading, chilling effect on development, um, and the residential that we want to see produced. So, um, you know, so my, you know, my, my, my thought is, um, you know, in my feedback generally is I'm excited about this direction. I've supported it for many years now. Um, and, and I, I guess I, you know, as we get closer to refining, uh, the goal. My, my, you know, my sense is that we want to hone in on something that's a lot more flexible in the form of, um, tiered concessions and establishing some, you know, some base bottom, um, bottom floors for resi production. But also looking at, you know, one size does not fit all. And there may be, um, there may be scenarios where, where that's not appropriate. And, um, in creating conditions for opt-out, um, and, and, uh, ways that the, the development community can, um, continue to work in the city and produce residential. So that's overarching my feedback across all of these questions, if that's enough, um, and clear. I, I would also say that, you know, I did want to raise and reiterate the point that, um, that was raised here in prioritizing not just family size housing, um, but also for sale, um, affordable housing. That is a, a extremely valuable way to support, um, to support people to build limited equity and, and generational wealth in, um, in this city and to set deeper roots here, which I think is a really important over, overarching strategy and goal for our city, um, is helping people build lives here, right? And stay here. And so, you know, there's a part of me that wants to, if we're, if we have some appetite for broadening this discussion, to also think about, are there, are there other options and types of concessions that we want to consider for types of housing stock? Especially affordable housing stock that we want to incentivize in the city. So, um, so I, I put that out there if there's, if this is the appropriate time to raise it, um, and consider it and fold it into this conversation.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Great comments. Uh, who would like to go next? Deputy Mayor.
Manera, thank you for a great presentation. Thank you, Nicholas and Terran. Could you bring back up or could you let me know studios versus one bedrooms that are currently being built or in the pipeline and what that looks like? So we're four 18 studios to, to eight 26 one bedrooms. Okay. And the, the public appetite that, or that what we've heard is that, well, what was the other number? That what percentage people rather be in a one bedroom than a studio? Cause I think you had that too. Was that the next?
We had some data from the, the lease data from Kiku Crossing. And, uh, my understanding is that the, the lowest amount of applications were for studios. So out of the 6,000 applications that we received, oh, about 500, I believe, were for studio units versus like 1,800 for two bedrooms or one bedrooms and 1,200 for three bedroom units.
Yeah. I mean, and, and I know everybody knows this, but just to stay on record, state density says a studio bedroom is one unit and a three bedroom is also one unit.
That is correct.
Which is a flaw of the state that we need to collectively put our, put pressure on. I mean, to me, three bedroom units are affordable housing, even, even at market rate, because you're able to, to house, for example, extended family, you could have two or three working adults, four working adults in a three bedroom house or a three bedroom apartment. And, you know, I see that in my own neighborhood where, you know, I have neighbors who have five, six adults who all work. And it gives them that opportunity and that pathway to at some point build equity, to be able to, you know, step up and maybe hopefully afford to buy at some point. So I think that, I think the idea of, of having more three bedrooms is, 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 is a good one and I support it. Going the other way, do we have any rules on the books or do we have an opportunity to put laws on the books to make sure that mixed use, which has either been built or is being built and has a high level or a, a ground level of commercial, that hasn't been utilized for a long time. So like fallow space, um, there's a complex near me that the entire first floor, with the exception of one unit is just completely empty and it's been empty for years. Do we have any ability, uh, to put a time, put a time or put some conditions in place with builders? Especially when they're coming from new projects that says, hey, look, if you can't, if you can't rent this stuff out within a certain amount of time, then the commercial then, uh, returns back to being or gets converted to being residential is, what does that look like?
True the mayor, I think that is definitely an important conversation that is happening with our economic development manager as well. Like rates of vacancy in commercial tenant spaces and, um, and, and something that we will be exploring. I'm not aware of what requirements or standards could be established for something like that. So I'm looking to our city manager to see if something's happening on that.
So having the experience of this in a city just six miles south from here, uh, typically when you have commercial floor, you know, square footage that has been remained empty. Oh, you know, some of the developers have looked at trying to transition them to the residential, but it still is way too difficult at this point in time to pull that off. Now, if it was in a new development, I don't know how that would be, you know, I think that's part of the community engagement process that we'd have to ask at a new construction, if you plumbed it that way. Cause we usually we're trying, we're working actually on the economic development side. This is one of the blue, blue sky themes and items that we're going to be working on is making sure that these are leasable spaces and making sure wherever we're putting retail are the right nodes of where you should be planning to put, uh, retail, where you're clustering and getting the foot traffic and the energy so that these are successful units. And so I know that you might talk about the project that's next to your house. I know envisioning with future Concar or even where the Marriott's at or Bayou. If you really think about the future, there might be opportunity. It just hasn't, you know, reached that potential just yet. But I know that we're, we're looking at just over this next year, uh, program where we'll bring on, um, commercial real estate broker, um, retail specifically, um, to really help advise and look at a strategy for those empty storefronts.
Okay. And we're open to the discussion with these, these units saying, hey, look, if you want to approach this about potentially converting, you know, that's.
So I think the ground floor activation, that's a bigger question. I think that's, you know, I'll look at Zach for the future of what that means in general planning terms, where it makes sense possibly, but where it doesn't, uh, you know, I think the city has to, you know, once you lose that ground floor, Councilmember Newsome, it's hard to get it back, especially if you're going to turn into residential.
Sure. Okay.
And if I may, uh, I'll just add that I think you characterized that you framed in the right way. If, if a, uh, developer of a built project approached the city about converting a new space into another space versus requiring a property owner of a project that's been built and for which they have vested rights and forcing that, uh, owner to change for one use to another use, that, that's more of, I'll just call it a challenge to do it that way.
Good. Uh, thank you. So to answer your questions, uh, one, yes, however, would like more information and more, uh, more data. Two, um, yes, and I think that this overlaps with our zones for future development. Three, yes. And again, more data and information about what that ratio should look like. And question one below. I don't think we can define yet what that ratio should be, but I am supportive of more two and three bedroom units. I think again, we need more information and more study information so we know. And three, sorry, no, second two, sorry. I, I believe I'm yes, and I think we can make a case for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges. If you could.
Get myself unmuted here. Thank you very much. The discussion's been great. Just a little background, I'm very excited about this study session tonight. Very early when I got into council and we were discussing this, I've been, I can't say I've been offended, but shocked that we've had at least one project that got the density bonus here that did four units of housing. And so I said that night, uh, when this first came up, when I first got on, that we should not increase the heights allowable for office developments alone, but should allow people, uh, who are doing the density bonuses to do those, but to require a percentage of housing. And I think I said at that time, I thought 20% would go. And I want to add that based on the difficulty in getting money for office development, that it would probably be much easier, the more housing units you had in a mixed use development right now, to get the money to build. Cause there is virtually no money out there right now. Uh, so yes, should the city establish minimum density requirements for mixed use developments? Absolutely. We can't let this go on where it's just sort of a, a drive-by wave to put in housing. And, uh, I'll have something to say about three bedroom later on. Should the city establish specific minimum residential densities within certain ra- radiuses of Caltrain Station or along the El Camino Real? Where better? Absolutely. Uh, should the commercial incentives be tiered depending on the proportion of residential units provided? Probably. I'm not a hundred percent sold on that, but probably. And the inclusionary housing, should the city require all developments with affordable units to provide a minimum of 20% of these units as three bedroom units? Let me just say that as, uh, as, as an example, when I moved into Harbor Town, 40% of the units are three bedroom. There were no children, zero in any of the units in Harbor Town. Since the cost of housing has gone up so much and since our units are quite big, we have so many children now and it's made the developments much more lively and pleasant, in my opinion, to have children around and families. Uh, so yes, we should require, uh, a minimum, and I'd say 20% is a good start. Uh, should the city, uh, evaluate these feasibilities requiring a percentage of all units in original development? Not just affordable units to be family sized? Yes, absolutely. Michael Reagan spoke earlier about making room for families here and he wanted some more, uh, for sale units as I do. Uh, these could be condos, but yes, uh, three bedroom units allow families to live here. And I've heard people say, well, people want to live in apartment building. That's not true. Some people, including myself, prefer apartment, single family housing. I've never had a single family house. So thank you very much. And those are my answers.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see, a couple of questions from me. I, I know, Manera, you said that in, in putting this presentation together, the research you gathered was largely from the general plan phase and, you know, things that we'd done before. But that part of the commitment for the next phase would be to go out and actually have discussions with for-profit, not-for-profit developers at the specific level, not just at the high level. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Cause I think I'm hearing from everyone that that's pretty critical to making that, that final determinations to what we want. Then I think I heard, so that I guess I would say in terms of trying to see where we've got consensus, I would reiterate what a lot of my fellow council members said. And number one, that it's probably too early to come up with specific numbers right now without having gone out and had those discussions. I think you and, and EPS and all the partners involved in this did some really good foundational work. But I think we really do need to go out and talk to our for-profit, our not-for-profit developers as well as, you know, businesses in the area, um, to make sure that what we would be proposing is what they can pencil out. Because we don't ever want to say, we want you to do this, but you can't do it. So it, nobody wants that. So I think that's very important. Um, also I think as many of our speakers said tonight, looking at family size, but also for sale units and Councilmember Lee brought that up as well. Michael Reagan brought that up. Uh, you know, we obviously can't dictate that it's one way or another. But are there ways that we can have that discussion now, I think would be very important. Um, so going on, I'm hearing an interest in looking at other metrics for other types of developments. So small properties or existing properties, I think that would be part of the discussions that you would have with developers. And so then going back to the questions, I think I'm hearing consensus and I would agree that the city does, should be looking to establish minimal residential requirements for mixed use development with a residential component, not every mixed use, but that we really need to go out and talk with developers and others before we come back with the minimum. And I wouldn't want to go out to them and say, let's talk about 50% or let's talk about 20% without understanding what their needs are. Uh, specific minimal, minimum residential densities within a certain radius. Yes. Um, I think we're all saying that that's a good thing to discuss, but once again, what should that be? And as all my council members have said, incentives are always more attractive than you must. So the more we can do tiered incentives, the more we can look at trade-offs. I, I am all for that. Um, in terms of the family units, absolutely. We need to try and understand how can we incent more family units? Because everyone said before, that's, that's what we want for people to come here and stay here. But not talking about specific numbers now, really saying, tell us what will, what can we do to incent you to do as much as possible? Um, and definitely evaluating the feasibility of requiring a percentage of all units to be family sized. But I wouldn't want to give up one and two bedrooms as well. I agree with Deputy Mayor Newsom that there's a flaw in the state law of, you know, a unit is a unit is a unit. But what can we do to, um, if Kiku Crossing is any kind of indication, two bedrooms and one bedroom were very attractive. So how do we just try and get out of just the studio unit and really try and incent? So I'd be open to all of that. And I think I heard consensus throughout. So did you get what you needed from all of us? Yep. Okay. So thank you and thank you to the partners. This is such an important, um, topic and we want to, we want to support it. But we want to support it in a way that everyone can be successful. Okay. Thank you all. So we will, um, conclude this study session and take a break until seven o'clock is okay for you? Okay. Okay. So we are closed with the study session. Go use your nine minutes wisely. Thank you.